Welcome to the June 8th Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time and ask for any public comment on any items not listed on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move forward. We have no Planning Commission minutes this evening, so we'll move right into our first hearing, which is CP 09-01, Concept Master Plan for Oregon City Public Works Center Plan. At this time, I will open up the hearing and read our information. Staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff prior to speaking. All letters, reports, pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin your testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss this criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in Circuit Court. At this time, I'll ask any commissioners, you've already made some comments in the record, so if you want to make any other comments regarding ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, or bias. None? Okay. Then we will move forward. Tonight, we'll begin with Tony and a partial staff report, and then, well, guess we'll get into a presentation. Tony?
Thank you, Chair. First and finally, good evening, commissioners. So at our last hearing, we continued the record with the record open to tonight's hearing date. The intent was to have additional information prepared by the applicant and distributed to the citizens and the neighborhood association so that they'd have a chance to review and comment. There was, putting together that information took a little bit longer than we anticipated, so we did get that information out to the neighborhood association, but in an effort to allow them additional time to be able to review it, take it in, discuss it, and then comment, we are requesting that you have the hearing tonight, allow the applicant to make their presentations, allow anyone who wishes to speak, go ahead and do that, and then we'll continue the hearing with the record open to the June 22nd, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. And we are holding the hearing tonight. As you recall, it's been about a month since our last meeting when we reviewed this application. And at that time, after that meeting, we, the city had lined up several experts in their fields to come and testify tonight, so just because of scheduling purposes, we decided to go ahead and hold the hearing tonight, have them present. We would ask that, if possible, if we could hear the whole presentation from the applicant and hold the questions till the presentation's done unless you just have a dying question to jump in there with. And then, I'd also like to enter into the record several documents that we received after we sent out the mailing, which I did provide to you, but we'll go ahead and put them in the record now, and these, like I said, were provided to the neighborhood association as well. The first will be entered as Exhibit A. It's a June 1, 2009 memo from John Lewis addressing the questions and concerns raised through the citizen process. Exhibit B will be an air quality analysis prepared by Carl Bloom dated May 27, 2009. Exhibit C is a color map titled Potential Sites for New Operations Center. Exhibit D is an October 20, 2005 geotechnical investigation of South Center Street load limits. Exhibit E will be a transportation impact analysis by DKS and Associates dated May 2009 as an addendum to the original. And then Exhibit F will be a noise analysis prepared by Michael Minor dated June 1, 2009. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicants for their presentation unless you have questions of staff.
Any questions, staff, at this time? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you, Tony. And welcome, Nancy.
I was wondering, David, you and Peter could go to the center table, and Michael, if you could go to the other table. We're trying to keep our logistics streamlined. Good evening, Chair Powell and Planning Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I would respectfully ask that you consider giving us 30 minutes instead of 15 minutes time for our presentation this evening. It's a fairly complicated application. It's a really very, very important topic for the city, and I think in order to cover things adequately, we may need more than the 15 minutes, and we'd rather stop before 30 than not asking, not be able to finish.
That's good.
Yeah? Sounds good. We'll move forward with that.
Thank you. And then I wanted to reiterate what Tony said. We will also be asking the Planning Commission to consider continuing the hearing, leaving it open. We want to make sure that the neighborhood has plenty of time to review all the additional materials we passed out as well as the Planning Commission, so that will be something we would request. What we have for you tonight is, I'll just do a very quick review of the packet which you have, and Tony actually kind of did that, so I don't want to be repetitive, but we've got the original application, and then you were given a series of reports tonight that we feel, while they weren't necessarily required, certainly based on the public input we received, we felt it was very important to address some of the concerns and questions of the public for this proposed development. So we think that all of those items should be fairly comprehensive, and we'll hopefully enjoy reading them. And then, our presentation tonight, we're just going to do a brief overview of the master plan, which you've had that little document for quite a while now. David Hyman, the architect, is then going to review any of the changes or additions that were made since the original application. And then, we're going to ask Peter Coffey to give a presentation on the traffic impact study. That was a pretty significant concern of the public. And then, Michael Minor is going to give a summary of his company's analyses of the noise impacts and air quality impacts that we anticipate. Then David will do a very brief coverage of the memo that John Lewis prepared for you that addresses all of the items of concern by the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. David will just kind of select the key aspects. And then, if time allows, we'll go over the site search map, which we may or may not need. It's fairly self-evident, but we can always, we're prepared to discuss it if needed. So David, could you please start the overview? Thank you.
David Hyman with DECA Architecture.
Sure. I'm David Hyman with DECA Architecture from Portland. As Nancy said, we're the architects for the master plan. I want to take just a few minutes to go over the master plan and sort of the reasons for the master plan, and I apologize, I know a lot of you have kind of seen this presentation before, but if there's, I assume there's a few people in the audience that haven't, so just to sort of establish the need for these facilities that we're proposing. This is the project team that we've had on here with the exception of Michael Minor, who's added recently, who is the noise and air quality consultant, but if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer it. This is the project site, and there's, as we've noted in the past, there is the lower site, which is the existing office building and shops on the lower site on Center Street, and then the upper site, which includes a variety of different buildings, storage warehouses and shops on this area up here. And this is the armory, which is currently under the ownership or the control of the Oregon Military Department, which we're in negotiations to acquire. So I wanted to just reiterate and establish the pressing need that the operations department has for these facilities, and particularly, and also with the merging of the engineering and operations departments on the new site. But the reason for this whole master planning study is because the facilities that they're in now are woefully inadequate, and I think that can't be overemphasized, that there's shops and storage spaces scattered throughout the city. The office staff is very remote from these functions. The public works, engineering departments, really would work better in conjunction with the operations department. Much-needed yard space for equipment and bulk storage, and because the upper site right now is actually quite contoured and the buildings are spread out so far, it's really inefficient. The fleet shop, as you'll see, I'll show some photographs, is, they're making do with some really tight space and doing a pretty amazing job of making do with big vehicles in these really tight spaces. And then the current operations office building, although it looks okay from the outside, is very inefficiently laid out. There's a lot of level changes. There's office spaces that are way too small, and if it had to be remodeled, it would require significant seismic and ADA upgrades. So just to kind of go through very quickly, this is a recently, in the last couple of years, acquired building, a warehouse. This is the main operations facility, the office facility, and these are all on the lower site right now that I'm showing, and some of the shops. And this is the bluff with covered truck parking. As you can see from the yard, a lot of big vehicles packed into a very small space. Turning radiuses are very difficult. This is the fleet shop with, you know, large VAC trucks and a variety of different trucks have to be wheeled into these really tiny little openings. As you can see from the interior, I mean, this is the kind of space they have on the side when they bring in some of these large trucks to work on them, and the head height is, in some areas, is just barely enough, so they're kind of shoehorned in and making do with what they can. Another view of that. This is just some interior pictures of the office building. You have to duck to get into this office. It's about a five-foot header height here. And then on the upper yard, these are the buildings that they're making do with, the old cannery warehouse. This is another building. This is the armory, which is not part, currently part, but of the operations department that we would like to acquire, and another large warehouse. But you can kind of see the level of rot and disrepair, so, you know, it's, these are very difficult to use efficiently. And so we've decided, after, in 2005, we did a facilities plan and looked at a lot of different sites as alternatives to this, and came to the conclusion at that time, and then we also kind of updated that search through a GIS survey recently, that there really wasn't anything suitable in proximity to the area that they need to work. And so we decided to really see how we could creatively use the site that they currently occupy. So for cost reasons, they already own the property, the idea of building up instead of out would allow us to bridge the gap between the 40-foot height limit between the upper and lower sites. It's centrally located near the city hall and some of the areas that they serve. And through this master plan process, we came up with the following recommendations: Develop the site in phases. Acquire the armory as soon as possible. Close south John Adams Street where there's a lot of cut-through traffic. Close south John Adams Street right now, which is a private road but is cut through by the public quite a bit. Demolish the existing warehouses and office buildings, both on the upper and lower site, over phases, over a number of years, and build new shops on the upper side. Build a new four-story building right in this area, which we'll show you, and purchase additional property as it becomes available. This is the boundaries of the current site, including these two small parking lots on Center Street, first and Center. And this is, if in full phase build out, if property became available, this is what the site might look like in 10 to 20 years. Zoning, it's currently zoned institutional, which is an allowable use. The operations department is an allowable use within that zone. This would be the first phase. First of all, leaving everything that's on the lower site and developing, partially developing the upper site with covered truck parking, some covered bin storage, a de-watering facility, and then some covered van parking and bin storage. Phase two would be to build a four-story building right here, which again bridges the gap with the use of an internal elevator between the upper and lower sites. Put temporary parking, oops, put temporary parking right here that would serve that office building, and then that would allow us, once this building is built, that would allow us to tear down the existing office building that they currently occupy. Phase two, build shops on the upper site, so there'd be a sign shop, machine shop, welding shop, fleet shop in this area, and then you could tear down the ones that are down there and add parking that would serve the four-story office building. And then in the final phase, especially if the armory is acquired, to build a site out like this, so essentially fill out the additional covered truck parking and shops that are required, develop stormwater detention pond, which is the low point of the site, and really develop the site, the intent is to really develop the site with, as a demonstration project for sustainable stormwater management and landscaping. Additional stormwater swale over here. Excuse me. So as part of the master plan, we were requesting, in order to accomplish this, the following adjustments: Allow zero setback at property lines between Waterboard Park and the operations site at the proposed, in this area here. Allow zero setback in the property line between the armory property and the operations, which is right here. In order to maximize the use of the site, we don't want to have to provide setbacks on both sides, and then once you acquire the armory, have sort of leftover space. And then allow zero setback at the property line at the proposed first and Washington Street, street vacations. Right here, these streets are not contiguous. There's a bluff right here, so we were proposing that these be vacated and that we'd be given a zero setback allowance in that area. And then allow reduction in the aisle width for surface parking lots across South Center and for 90-degree parking, so these two lots here. In order to provide the required, the code-required landscaping, we're asking for a reduction in the aisle width, so that'll be well-shielded from the neighboring properties, but it will require a slight reduction because the lots just aren't big enough to accommodate both. And then also exempt the use of the city code institutional and commercial building standards, which are designed mainly for downtown buildings with pedestrian standards and windows, required window openings. Exempt those on the upper site where they're mainly shops. And then finally, and not least of all, is allow an increase in height on the lower site for this four-story office building to 60 feet. The current height allowance, height limit in the institutional zone is actually 75 feet, but what if it's within 100 feet of a public right-of-way, it drops to 35 feet. And so what we're asking is, because it's up against the bluff and because we need that kind of extra height to bridge the gap between the upper and lower sites, that we be given an exception to allow the building to go to 60 feet. And that's an important component, a very important component of the master plan, we think is critical to the success of this. So what's changed since, what we've done is we've had, I think, three meetings with the neighborhood. I believe we've had, this is our third meeting with the commission, Planning Commission. We've met with HRB a couple of times, and there's a whole host of questions that have come up, and you have this in your packet, these 50 questions that have come out as a result of that, and our responses to that. So we have a very detailed set of responses to those, but I just kind of want to hit some of the high points of the changes to the original application. We've compiled that list of responses. We've updated and expanded the traffic study, which Peter will address in a minute. We've prepared a noise report, an air quality report, which Michael Minor will address. We've, at the request of the neighborhood, we've found the geotechnical report for Center Street that stipulated a load limit on that street, and we've updated the GIS survey to show, because one of the main issues that has, one of the big issues that was brought up is why can't the center be on some other site? So we've done a GIS survey to show that there really aren't any other sites that are suitable. So the proposed adjustments to the master plan include a traffic management plan, which Peter will describe, and we've added one piece of property for possible future acquisition if it becomes available. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter, and he can address the traffic report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
How about that? Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Peter Coffey with DKS Associates. I'm a registered traffic and civil engineer in the state of Oregon with 23 years of experience. Want to talk, go through the process of our traffic impact study, which you have in your packet, and the first element is the traffic count information, and we collected a number of different traffic counts, really to gain an understanding of the traffic on the site, what's currently going to and from the site and the traffic on the surrounding roadways. So three different types of traffic counts we collected. One is what we're calling vehicle turn movement counts during the AM and the PM peak hour. So the AM peak hours is from 7:00 PM to 9:00 AM, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and the PM peak hour from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And you can see on Figure 2 a list of some of our study area intersections, so that's the same figure that's in the traffic impact study, and I just blew it up for your visualization. So we collected counts, so we collected them, collected some count data from 2005, additional count data in 2009, and pretty much we took the highest volumes at each of those intersections. Primarily, the 2005 counts were done in the spring. Some of the 2009 counts, some were done in January, and some were done later in the year in May. And so therefore, we took the highest volumes we get, because there are some seasonal adjustments due to the traffic volumes in the area, especially related to the site. So that's one type of counts we did. The other type were some, what we call 24-hour tube counts, where we put tubes down on the roadway to count how many cars go over those tubes over a 24-hour period, so we get an understanding of the daily traffic over those sites. And two particular places we did those counts were on John Adams Street on the upper site, both at the, I'll say, the southern end of the site, and then the northeast end of the site, the northeast end, meaning near the armory, and then the southern end, more near Center Street, so we get an idea of how much traffic is going on that roadway today. And the third type of counts were what we called vehicle classification counts, because we talked about, David was talking about, cut-through traffic, and we were trying to figure out, okay, what kind of vehicles are using South John Adams Street today? So we had someone out there from 6:15 in the morning until 9:15 in the morning one day, and another person from, it was 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And for every vehicle, we determined what kind of vehicle is it? Is it a Oregon City Public Works vehicle? Was it a vehicle related to the armory, or was it just what we call the cut-through traffic, meaning it was a private vehicle traveling through the site, going, you know, into the neighborhood, to the north or through the neighborhood? So that way, we had a handle on really what was going on. Today, the site, the employees park down on Center Street, as David talked about, primarily on Center Street and on two off-street sites on Center Street. Today, there's what we call 33 full-time equivalent employees, and with the proposed project, that would be increasing up to 70 full-time employees. So that'd be a combination of part-time and full-time, but we related them back to full-time equivalent employees. So just a little more than a doubling of employees. So in terms of the number of trips to the site, today during the AM peak hour, there were 46 today, and we thought that would, a little more than double. So with the project, that would be around 97 trips in the morning peak hour, and then in the evening peak hour, 82 vehicles. The site-related traffic, the peak hour in the afternoon for the site-related traffic is about 3:15 to 4:15, whereas the streets, the through-traffic and the commute-traffic peaks more a little bit later, from 4:00 to 5:00. So when the traffic from the site is peaking, it's not the same time as the traffic on the background traffic. Typically, at a shopping center, you might see the two overlap, but for this use, because the workday starts sooner and it ends a little sooner, they don't overlap. So some of the different elements of the project. One, we talked about moving the public works vehicles from the lower lot to the upper lot, as David talked about. Another one, moving the private employee vehicles, as we talked about the build-out phases. Today, they park on Center Street or across the street, and those would move into the lower lot, as David described. Another element of the project would be closing south John Adams Street to through-vehicles and then providing gates at either end of the site, so when the facility's closed, the roadway would be closed with gates at both ends. And one would be the elimination of vehicle trips from the lower to the upper lot, because today what happens on the site is there's public works vehicles in the lower lot, and they'll make trips from the lower lot onto Center Street to the upper lot, pick up some materials, they'll do some work, and then leave the upper lot and leave. So we've got trips that are using essentially the public street system to do circulation maneuvers, and ideally, we would like all those maneuvers off-street. Typically, we can consolidate operations. So we've got vehicles going onto the public streets, where really that isn't their purpose, it's just a maneuver on-site. So that's one of the elements that would be eliminating that, and one of the things we had to do with the traffic studies is determine how many of those, how much of that was going on, so we could decrease that, because it won't be happening in the future. So we talked about the operation essentially be from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and that would be Monday through Thursday, and then on Friday, their staff, only half their staff works every Friday. So on Fridays, essentially, you have half of the number of employees, and then on Saturday and Sunday, the site would be closed as well as in the evening. So during those periods, the site would be closed with no traffic on weekends. So one of the elements we did, we talked about the cut-through traffic. So today, there are approximately 75 vehicles a day, which we say are the so-called cut-through traffic using this private road going through the site. And today, there's two, I don't know if I can bring this with me or not, but can I? Don't think so? So if you look at this figure, there's two particular points. These are the two locations where I did the traffic counts. Can we see those? Can we see those okay? So of the daily volumes, I'm showing there's about 210 vehicles daily. Of those, about 135 are public works vehicles and about 75 are the cut-through traffic. Then at the other end, the volume is less, about 112, with fewer public works vehicles, 37, and then the cut-through again is about 75. So with the project... I'll just stay right here. So here's the same locations, what we're saying, the with-project condition. So with build-out of the project, where would the volumes be? And so here are the same two locations, so we can reduce the amount of cut-through traffic on the site. There's also some traffic going from the upper to the lower lot, so that would again be a decrease. However, we're adding more employees, or just a little more than doubling the number of employees. So putting all that together, this number in the other graphic was 210, so that would go up to 280. Then the other volume that's going to the north in the neighborhood, because the majority of that, about 66% of that, is cut-through, so that would go down. So that number would go to about 90. What I counted today was about 110, so I see a slight reduction in traffic going to the north in the neighborhood with a greater, with an increase of volume using the Center Street exit, is what I'm projecting. And so this is the same, this is Figure 4 that's in the traffic impact study. And there's, another count I did was on John Adams to the north of Third Street, so we put a tube across the roadway there. We see that volume slightly going down. I think my tube count was about 230 vehicles a day on that site, and I said with the reduction of traffic, that would go down just slightly to about 210. So approximately, approximately the same. Let me see.
Could I get through our presentation first?
And then we'll go back.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. So the other, two other figures that were relevant, and these were both in the study. There's a Table 7, and this is some of the trip generation in terms of what's the site, how much traffic is generated from the site today. So, the other, two other figures that were relevant, and these were both in the study. There's a table seven, and this is some of the trip generation in terms of what's the site, how much traffic is generated from the site today, and how much would be generated in the future. And then the other element was, okay, throughout the day from the upper site, where are vehicles going, which driveway are they using? So I, I took some data from the lower lot today and, and interpolated it out to the vehicles on the top. So here's a table that shows for the upper-site roadway, by hour of the day, starting at 6:00 AM and going to 4:00 PM, which driveway I'm projecting they would use with the increase in traffic. And these numbers, the 280 and the 90, would match the graphic on figure four. If you related those back and forth, they would graph. So, there are a couple, as we worked through staff, one of the elements was John Adams, as we head to the north, the roadway south of Second Street narrows to about 15 to 16 feet wide of pavement. So one of the things we talked about is having some of the larger vehicles use that roadway, and ideally, we wouldn't want the, the vehicles to pass. So one element that we talked about is for vehicles over one ton, if they left the upper site and headed to the north, that would, they would only be able to leave the site to head to the north, so they'd only be exiting movements to the site. And when those same vehicles return to the site, they would need to use the Center Street exit, because we didn't want larger vehicles passing each other on that roadway. So that's documented in the report in terms of the larger vehicles would only exit the site to the north. So this, this will minimize some of the conflicts to the north. So, the other element that we talked about was a traffic management program. And in, on page four of the study, I talked about what I thought the traffic management plan would include. So if you went, if you were on page four of the traffic impact study, there's the last bullet on that page, and there's some other sub-bullets underneath there. And one of them was, the first sub-bullet is vehicles larger than one-ton pickup truck will only travel north along John Adams Street, north of the site, except for emergency situations. Second bullet, the travel speeds of the public works vehicles along John Adams Street shall be monitored to ensure vehicles are driving within designated speed limit. And the third bullet, where the gates to the east end of the site should be closed after 4:30 PM on weekends and shall remain closed on weekends, with Center Street as their primary access point during these periods, except during emergency response. So one of the thing, one of the elements I talked with staff was, how do we monitor this program? And what I would propose would be for a period of five years after the approval of the site is that, on an annual basis, that traffic counts be done by the operations staff, and they have tube counters, so we can document how many vehicles are using each site, you know? Are we accurate in terms of what we're projecting? And are they using those sites? As well as monitoring the speeds of those vehicles. I think it would also allow a period on an annual basis, as this management plan is presented, it allow cities, it allow the city to receive comments from the neighborhoods. If they think there's public works vehicles speeding or going too fast in the neighborhood, it would be a time for, once a year, the city to receive those complaints. Are we being consistent with the assumptions that we made in the study in terms of volume of traffic on these streets and the speed of the vehicles on the street? So those are some ways I thought that we could help monitor this, and I put a five-year time limit to, to document that. So that is a summary of what we have in the traffic impact study, and then I'll turn it over to Michael. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Minor. Hi, I'm Michael Minor. Hi. Hi. Oh.
Hello.
Hey, that's better. I'm not an expert in microphones. I'm Michael Minor, and President of Michael Minor and Associates. We're a small firm specializing in air quality, noise, and vibration analysis for transportation projects, in the business for about 20 years. We were contacted to look at both air quality and noise for this project. Cover the air quality first, because it's, it's pretty straightforward. There, there, the, the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality is the governing body for air quality in the state of Oregon, and there really is no applicable criteria to this project. It's just a matter of, they really only have them for transportation projects, like for intersection analysis, for that, that sort of stuff. For facilities such as this, it's typically, there's typically not an air quality issue. But we did have a look at the plant, and the facilities, and the trucks that are going to be there, because I know there's going to be some issues and some concerns about odor and about smell and soot. And what we found over the years is that the, the emissions from vehicles has reduced so much that, in, in most cases, a facility like this doesn't produce enough bad air quality to, to cause any problems. We also looked at the intersections close to the, close to the site, because where cars are idling for long periods of time is where you have the worst air quality. In fact, the whole greater Portland area, years ago, was considered, exceed, was considered to exceed both the carbon monoxide and the ozone issues as part of the, of the national air quality, ambient air quality standards. And then we had to, the whole Portland area had to come up with a plan to modify transportation, to, to adjust intersection timing, to do whatever they could to better the air quality. And they've done a very good job of that, and in fact, we've, we've been in compliance pretty much consistently for about the past seven years, I think. And we're getting close to being called an attainment area, which means we don't have to do any, as much, as much monitoring as we have been in the past. Cars have gotten a lot cleaner, and then there's a, there's a graph in the, in the, in the report that shows the U.S. annual vehicle miles traveled versus noble source air toxins, which are the things that people don't like. And the vehicle, even though the vehicle miles traveled have increased by about 64% by the year 2020, all the air quality pollutants will have reduced significantly by then. And in fact, every year, the cars are cleaner than they were the year before. So what we did do, though, is we, we did a comparison using a simplified model that basically takes the increase in the number of vehicles and the types of vehicles that they are, and, and looked at nearby intersections and roadways to see if there was going to be a notable increase in air quality. And there isn't. There's, there's nothing that we could measure or calculate that would, that would account for an extra 100 cars a day or 100 trucks a day. It's just, it's too small of an amount when you've got 3,000 existing vehicles. So it just doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't show up on the radar. So, based on that, we can firmly say that we don't think the product's going to worsen the air quality in the, in the area or in the city. It's, it's not going to have any, any effect on, at all. Now, that's not to say that there won't be times when people won't notice the odors, because if you have a low-pressure system, or you've got, you know, real cold morning, and, and the winds blow in the right directions, it might be noticeable. But as far as the long-term impact, there, there isn't any. Any questions on that?
Not yet.
Okay. The noise study, on the other hand, was a little bit more, more difficult. We actually went out and did some noise readings along, along Center Street by, by, by Second, and we also did some readings on John Adams, pretty close to the armory. And the measurement data's in there, and it was around 60 decibels at both places, which is just basically noise from passenger vehicles and trucks accessing and leaving the sites. Just, it's a typical noise level for downtown areas, around 60 decibels. And, and then we went with the full build of the site and assumed that the trucks would idle for a minute or two in the morning before they left. And, and we did identify that along John Adams Street, there was a, a pretty good potential that the site might exceed the Oregon DEQ noise criteria. So I talked with the designers and engineers, and what we decided probably the best thing to do would be to, to do some noise monitoring after we get some vehicles up there on the top level, and then try to work with them and, and design some sort of a noise mitigation platform if it's necessary. It'd probably be in the form of some sort of a noise barrier. And there also might be some things we can do with them to work around the, the, the flow of traffic on the site. So we maintain exhaust, not pointing towards residents, because that's always noisier than the other parts of it. And then we also, we made some other strong recommendations for the site to make sure that all the equipment has manufacturer-certified mufflers installed on them. Make sure that they all meet EPA noise standards, and any new vehicles they bought would, of course. Minimize noise by replacing and inspecting defective parts and mufflers, the shrouds on the engines, make sure those are kept closed and covered. Shut off idling equipment. Keep all those bay doors closed when they're working with pneumatic tools, or hammering or pounding on things. And that, that includes keeping the compressor, if there's going to be an onsite compressor, having that enclosed someplace or located far away on the site. And then if they do have to do something outside where they think they might disturb people, is to go ahead and notify the nearby residents, like on, on John Adams Street and, and those areas, that, that they have to do something. And then also, if there's any nighttime work for emergencies, try to keep the backup beepers off. And you can either go with smart beepers, or they can have a switch where they can turn them off and use a spotter. For our ODOT projects, anything after 10 o'clock at night, we do not use backup beepers. We require them to have a spotter and to turn off the beepers. So that's something they could do if they had to do late-night work. Okay?
When we started, but I think we're, we still have a few minutes left, right? Okay. So, I'd like to, I, I know you've, you've got a copy of this response to the, to the 50 questions, and there's some very detailed responses in there, but I'd like to just kind of hit the high points of that and maybe talk about some of the things that we heard quite a bit about from the neighborhood and other, other members of the community. One was access to Waterboard Park. By fencing, and by fencing the upper site and by providing and stopping access through it, people had asked about pedestrian access to the, to Waterboard Park, because there are, there is an access point on the east end. Phase four of the proposal includes a new trail at the west side of the upper lot that will connect to the existing path in Waterboard Park. So we want to provide access from Center Street, either on, either via the sidewalk, the sidewalk improvement on Center Street, or through another set of stairs that would take you to the upper site without going through the fenced operation center. So we, we intend to do that. As far as upgrading the paths that are in the park right now, I think that's a little more complicated issue, only because there are some kind of dangerous slide conditions there. And as I understand it, the parks department typically maintains those in conjunction with the operate, advice, or, you know, some sort of coordination with the operations department. So I think they'll have to monitor that and sort of look at areas that they can. But at least providing, maintaining the kind of existing access to the park, I think, is something we want to do. Outcrop removal, there's a, a Maroc outcropping on the upper site that's a fairly large area that is going to significantly, if we left it, would significantly reduce the effectiveness or the usability of that upper area. And I just want to point out that although there are some, some trees on that, and it would be changing the contours, we intend to replace more than the amount of trees that would be removed. So any, any trees that are removed anywhere on the site, actually, we're going to replace with at least the, that amount and more in other areas of the site. So it'll be a very heavily landscaped perimeter and to make, to shield it from the neighborhood. So we're going to put a lot of effort into that. The Center Street parking, the, on this, on the lower site, providing parking in the future phase for the office building, there's a 72-space parking lot located at the base of the cliff, and that'll serve the admin building, the new administration building. We intend that to be a public showcase for green stormwater management. We'll use pervious paving, we'll use landscape, landscape strips that will absorb water, and we plan on putting a cistern at the base of the cliff that will collect water from the upper site that will be used for irrigation. So there's a lot of things we're going to do, in addition to providing sort of an architectural edge to that site to buffer it from the street. So visibly, it's not going to look like an open parking lot. It's probably going, we're intending to put a architectural trellis that will have plants growing on it and have it very well landscaped. And then I think there was a lot of discussion also about the just overall design of the buildings, both on the upper site, but particularly on the lower site. And although the master plan doesn't get into that, there was another phase of a more detailed site design review, which will address that. I think the intent, given affordability and given constraints, financial constraints, is to make that as nice of a facility, all of these facilities as nice as possible and as sustainable as possible. I think we want to design that to a minimum of LEED Silver Standard, which is a fairly rigorous measurement for sustainability. Use materials that are both durable and attractive, and to blend those buildings in as much as possible with the neighborhood. And then finally, I think it's worth pointing out, and we, we've gone to great lengths to kind of outline the impacts of this development to the neighborhood through this noise report, through the traffic report, and through these responses to these questions. But we'd also like to point out some of the benefits that it has for the neighborhood, because I think they are significant as well. It will provide a significant landscape perimeter that's not there right now on the upper site, and new landscaping will improve air quality and provide wildlife habitat, as well as screen the upper site. The paving improvements on the upper and lower sites will reduce dust. The current, currently, the upper site is just, is mostly unpaved, so there is dust that comes out of all that traffic movement. And so I think that, that in itself will help to provide better air quality and, and better stormwater absorption. The elimination of the older structures and replacement with new buildings on the upper and lower sites, I think, will improve the overall appearance of the neighborhood and likely result in higher property values. Stormwater detention pond, we see that as, and the swale and the cistern, we see those as an amenity to the neighborhood, providing an educational benefit. The closure of South John Adams will reduce cut-through traffic, as Peter pointed out, and unwanted traffic through the neighborhood, particularly at night and especially on weekends when the operations department is, is not in operation, is not working. The acquisition of the armory is going to eliminate all of the tool sales that have been, many have complained about, and some of the other unwanted activities up there. Public parking will be provided at the lower lot, allowing additional neighbors to access Waterboard Park via sidewalks and stairs that I described that will take you to the upper site and reconnect with the Waterboard Park path. The new energy-efficient buildings will save taxpayer money. The frontage improvements on South Center Street provide new sidewalks and landscape and will improve the appearance from the street in addition to the, the new architecture, the new buildings. All the parking will be landscaped to exceed the code requirements. The existing surface parking lots that do not meet code, the ones across Center Street, will be brought into compliance and screened with landscaping. And then by moving the trucks that are currently parked on South Center to the upper side and providing one-way-only, under certain conditions, traffic for the larger trucks, it's going to reduce the amount of traffic on, at Fifth and Center, where truck traffic and school traffic currently mix. The intersection of South Center and First Street will be modified to be a two-way stop. I think we've talked about that. And then, and then the traffic management strategy should have a significant benefit to the neighborhood. So I think, hopefully, the, the discussions that you've heard tonight, in, in addition to the more detailed analysis in these reports, I think will give a pretty good picture of the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that would be the end of our formal presentation. John Lewis could also give some information about the site analysis, whether or not you find that important or not. We can or cannot do that, it's really up to you. And then we're available for questions, or I guess then you take whatever your process is. Thank you.
I would be, I think it's come up a couple times about the site analysis, it'd be interesting to hear, I think. John, if you wouldn't mind?
Well, I brought a large-scale drawing of this, but if, unless we have a microphone, it's kind of a challenge, I noticed, to do that. So, I can either do a microphone and post it, or you can live with the...
You just have to ask, John, we'll get you whatever you need.
All right, you got a microphone. Sorry I'm late, by the way.
John, John is missing his daughter's eighth-grade graduation tonight.
Oh, no.
But he did go to see her, to, he went to see her and hear her, seeing the National Anthem.
Oh, well, very good. I think I would have missed this personally.
Well, I, I went to actually see the, the National Anthem, so that was the most important part, and I just scrambled from there. Thank you, Peter. That's going to work. So this drawing's in your packet as well, but it's pretty small.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so, we looked, this, this was a much more in-depth process was performed back in 2005 when we did the facility plan, but there was quite a few questions about it. I wasn't overly familiar with what was done, so we did it again. We looked at it again. Things change, right? So we looked at it again. And so what we asked our JS group to do was to look for any grouping of parcels that was four acres or larger. I mean, we, we talked about our site being around seven and a half acres in total, so anything four acres or larger. And we looked at specific zoning, including the mixed-use employment, general industrial, campus industrial, and institutional. And not all of those fall into the perfect kind of zoning for what we might, what might be allowable for this kind of a use. But we looked at them all. And so there's, there's, you know, after looking at that, that was about the, the depth of our search, other than kind of going through it in my own mind and talking through it a little bit with Nancy about what we... a little bit with Nancy about what we, what's reality of what we could do with those parcels. So, you know, the, the parcels around the 205 interchange don't lend themselves well based on kind of current projects that are kind of being considered. The Metro project, or the wastewater treatment plant project, again, already kind of spoken for. Any of the parkland is, is not really appropriate use for that. A hospital, obviously, is going to stay. The cemetery, obviously, is going to stay. There was some, you know, I looked a little bit at this red soils corridor area, most of those properties are built out. There's one that's unbuilt, it's small, and it's also, I think, it's owned by the, the owners of Benchmade Knives. So I think they've got some potential growth in mind there. And then, of course, the county has their own master plan process that you, I think, reviewed and already approved. Same with the college. Anything off of fur was, is built or is zoned, general industrial. And I guess that's the other thing, is, as we move down here, we get quite a ways off-center of where we would really like to be. So that, that's one thing. But most of this down here is, is zone campus industrial. And from what I understand from our latest park acquisition is, it's not well viewed as using that kind of zoning for our particular use. And I also understand property wasn't easy to come by with the current ownership that's out there for additional property. Everything else was pretty much park property or the paper plant. So, that's it. Where is it off of? So there's, there's 4.1 acres that, that's Mountain View, it's our reservoir site, and we've got a 10 and a half million gallon reservoirs that takes up most of that property. And then there's a smaller reservoir across the street, which, which does, doesn't necessarily show up in the map, but it's across the street. And yes, we do have a master plan process that we also went through for that site, and it would be well undersized for what we need. It does, we do have provisions in that master plan for additional large vehicle parking, kind of the things that we don't use on a daily basis.
And then what's the little parcel in just to the, just adjacent to, no, to the right of that, the bigger piece, right there, right there, right there?
That's Singer Park.
That's what?
I think that's the Singer, I think it's called Singer-
Singer Creek.
Singer Creek Park.
Oh, okay, that's what that is. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, John. Okay, any questions at this time of any of the specialists that we have here?
I have a couple of questions. The storm, stormwater detention bio-swell construction is anticipated to be installed in phase four, is that right?
Well, we only put it in phase four because it required the acquisition of the armory. It could happen a lot sooner than that. And I think that's, that's our hope, that it would happen immediately. And I think, I don't know if there's anything new on the negotiations with Oregon Military Department, but I think they, they've expressed that they are interested in coming up with some sort of a trade or, or way of relinquishing that property. So I think all the wheels are in motion for that.
Okay, and I'm also curious about, was there any thought given to collecting the stormwater in tanks to use as irrigation?
Yes, there's, in the master plan, we're proposing a cistern actually at the base, in that parking lot at the base of the, the cliff, to collecting the stormwater that comes off of the upper site and the roofs. We, we're thinking that on the, the cistern might serve some of the landscape needs. We might also collect water from the roofs to use for flush trucks or other kinds of operations uses that, that-
How many gallons would that cistern hold?
We, we haven't sized it yet, but I think it would, honestly, I don't know, it would be in the thousands of gallons, certainly.
Tens of thousands of gallons.
Probably tens of thousands, yeah.
I would hope.
Oh, well, I don't, we haven't actually studied it, but yeah, having done other projects similar to that, it takes a pretty good size storage.
Okay, I also read that there was suggestions for moving the fueling station away from the perimeter-
Yes.
-of the project, and I, I didn't see that called out in any drawings. Were we going to get an updated set of drawings?
Actually, can, can we get the presentation back on again? We actually made that change before we submitted the master plan application, so it's, it's actually in there, well, if you-
So where, where we see it in our-
Where you see it in there is, is already moved back-
Okay.
-and we're proposing to screen that with landscape, which I think is indicated on there.
Okay. The, the sidewalks, the pedestrian sidewalk for the public from Center Street up the bluff, that's not showing in our drawings yet, is that true?
That has not been engineered yet, but I think we do have it on our civil drawings, don't we, the sidewalk? There is not yet? No, I think there are some constraints on, because of the rock outcropping, that as you go up there, there's going to have to be some modifications. And that's part of the, the idea of connecting the lower and upper sites. If, if there isn't contiguous sidewalk access allowed just by the topography, we're going to provide another stair that goes up and kind of skirts around the fenced area of the upper site.
And, and then I'd like to go to, to the, the traffic study drawings, maybe you could put those up. And what I wanted to understand was at build-out, how the traffic patterns flow on the north end of South John Adams, again. And I, I guess that's confusing for me because I'm understanding that the South John Adams is going to be closed. And so I guess my assumption would be that 90% plus of the traffic that would be exiting to the north of South John Adams would be, would be the, the traffic from, from the, from the operations center. Is that, is that true?
Right, right. So is this working? Yeah, so this is, this is figure four, and this would show the projected traffic at build-out of the site. And so there's, this is up near the armory end. And so, yeah, we're showing about 90 vehicles a day using that, and those would all be operations vehicles. Because all the employee vehicles would park off Center Street. So all those 90, and then also the 280 would all be public works vehicles.
Okay, was there, was there, I'm sure there had to be consideration given to eliminating any egress from the operations center through South John Adams. Was, was that discussed at all? And how did the reasoning go to, to continue to allow that traffic to egress north on South John Adams?
I can address that, but you might want to do, you might want to talk about it, John.
So you're talking about stopping all operations traffic from using John Adams?
I'm, I'm curious if that discussion came up, and if it came up, how did, how did, how did that discussion proceed?
Right, originally, we were proposing having full access, two-way traffic, unlimited access to John Adams. And that was brought up as a concern because of the narrowness and the type of the roadway and the noise and, you know, the, the air quality. All those issues were kind of brought to the table as reasons not to use John Adams. So in considering our need for multi-access to the site, we, we talked about how we might mitigate some of that damage as opposed to completely eliminating it. It is, it is a good access for one-way traffic for larger vehicles. It's a straight shot down the hill, and it's got reasonable site distance, even though it's narrow, it's reasonable site distance. And then on the Center Street end of things, while it's adequate and something we've been using pretty, fairly heavily, it is narrow and one of the, and we've got a fairly tight turn to get out of the site. But we are planning to use that fairly heavily as well. And so, but we needed both, both, both access. We feel strongly that we need both accesses. But we feel like we can transition the site such that here, a lot of our traffic does more of a one-way through.
And so we're seeing at build-out, less traffic going northbound on South John Adams-
That's right.
-than what we're seeing today.
That's right.
So it's actually a reduction over time, based on the new use. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Different kind of vehicles, but less traffic.
And I guess finally, I was curious about whether or not there'd been some consideration given to emergency planning in the event of, say, flood and, and residents needing to fill sandbags. Would this site be a central site for people to go to get sand and bags, similar to what's happening now out on Center Street?
I believe so, yeah, definitely lends itself to that. I mean, we may do some of that still out on Center Street where those additional parking lots are at, but just to make them more visible and obvious. But it still lends itself very well to that kind of use, even if we find, I mean, typically during those times, we, you know, may not need as much parking on the, for public and employees.
Okay.
And I wanted to add too, and then Commissioner Stein, the other thing that we did this last winter was we put a sandbag location up here on the hilltop too, just to make it more convenient for this community.
Great, thank you. Another question about the, the air quality analysis that was done. Was the equipment that you used sensitive enough to pick up the odors from the paper factory?
You know, there's really no really accurate way to pick up just odors. There are some, there are some, oddly enough, there are actually people that have certified noses. I know that seems strange, but it's true. And they, we actually had to use one out in Beaverton once on a bus project, but it rarely happens. And there, there really isn't any good equipment that, that can discern what's, you know, because it's, I, I don't want to say it's somebody's personal choice, because pretty much everybody thinks diesel smoke stinks, but there is really nothing, no measurement equipment that quantifies odors. So, no, we just look at CO, we look at particulate matter and sulfur dioxide, which are the things that combine together to make the smell. And, and so it can tell, the modeling can tell if there's an increase in the sulfur dioxide content. But an increase of 50 cars, and when you've got 3,000 or 50 trucks, when you've got around 3,000 vehicles, it wouldn't show up in the model. It's too, that'd be too small of an amount.
Is there any way to qualitatively compare the air quality around the paper plant to the area around the operations center site at build-out?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go out on a limb, but I, I would definitely say that I think the air quality at the paper plant's going to be a lot worse because they use a lot of, a lot of very toxic materials in there, the bleaching and the chlorine to clear the paper. And it's been my experience that, that some of the worst air quality you get is from paper and pulp manufacturing facilities.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say publicly, that if you notice odors down there, it's not our sanitary sewer system. It definitely is not that. So we've got lots of calls about that, so I just want to make-
It's not our fault.
I've got a couple of questions. One, I want to kind of go back to the John Adams. I walk that quite a bit, and it is pretty narrow. And I, I guess I'm still a little confused and concerned a little bit about having bigger vehicles going. I, I would feel more comfortable if you said, well, we're going to have smaller vehicles go down there because it's less narrow, or it's, it's narrower and, and we're going to have sidewalks. You know, that, that would make more sense to me. But it seems to me to put a bigger truck going one way on a, on a hill that drops pretty quickly, sight, I mean, I've, I've walked, I've walked it and I've driven it, and it is difficult. It just concerns me a little bit, though, you've got larger trucks coming that, on that hill, dropping down into, and you're assuming that, you're only going to go one way, but there are other people going the other way. So I'm, is it wide enough for your vehicles plus a, plus a passenger car?
The one, is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the one-way traffic is for the large trucks only. We're seeing anything that carries a one-ton load and less would be able to go both ways. We've, I mean, we use it with large vehicles now. We don't usually see them coming up the other way, but I think we, we do. It does, there is good site distance, especially in those larger vehicles when you're up, up as high as, you know, you're much, much higher than you would as a pedestrian. We did talk a fair amount about signage in our plan and kind of sending the message to at least our own staff to read that would know that it was one-way vehicles, but it's, it's definitely adequate for our needs, in our opinion.
So wouldn't, would it not, or was it reviewed, this entrance off of Center Street, to widen that entrance and, and maybe make that larger for the vehicles, the large vehicles to access that more freely and easily?
We, we hope to be able to do that as well, but even if we widen it, we're still, still looking, we might get five or six feet out of that driveway entrance. And so we'd rather, we'd rather not use that any more than we have to, and continue to leave our options open for John Adams. And I felt like, we felt like cutting that traffic, it's not necessarily cutting it in half because we're still allowing the, the smaller vehicles to use it as well, but it's a reduction.
And I could see using John Adams as an emergency use as needed, you know, but, but really minimize that and really make your effort to, to focus it more off Center Street. That, that just makes more sense to me from a, from a, just looking at the phase four I'm looking at, it seems more logical to me to re, bring people up that way as opposed through John Adams through a residential area.
One of the other things that I was, I'm just thinking about is that, one of the things that we've talked about, just to reduce the, the backing of the beepers, is to kind of turn one of the larger vehicle parking areas just slightly so that vehicles can come in on Center Street, pull into their, their stall, and then leave and go out John Adams without having to do any real turning within the site. So, again, trying to minimize some of the noise issues. One of our, a couple of our largest vehicles are back-on vehicles. I'm not excited about having to make that turnout on to Center Street coming down South John Adams. So going, going north on John Adams is much, much more favorable maneuver for them.
Mm-hmm.
Chair Paul, I just wanted to add too, that our, the large vehicles, there probably aren't that many every day that use, that would use John Adams. The other thing that I'd like to point out is one of the things that we would look at from a traffic management point of view is to, during the lunch hour, or if you're coming in to pick something up, you would just park in front on Center Street, not necessarily, well, you're going to come up that way anyway. But so they wouldn't be, if they came in to pick something up or for break or for lunch, they wouldn't be leaving on John Adams again, you know? We would, we would like to use it as little as possible, but we think it really is for site circulation, a really important movement to preserve.
Mm-hmm. Well, so I'll let that go for a while, but I, I'll still think that through. From an air quality standpoint, I'm wondering, did, was it reviewed, the, any excessive idling? Would that be done? Would your study take into account the winter where they'd be idling more to warm the vehicles versus the summer where they're idling less? And would that take into account not only noise, but also the, the air and, and air quality?
The model really requires us to have some sort of a signalized intersection for timing in order to run that full analysis. So the base analysis that we did just assumed a couple minutes of idling. So it could be a little bit worse in the winter when there was low pressure systems and, and, yeah, it would be a little bit louder. We also only assume the, the, we did AM peak hours, so we only had 16 heavy vehicles leaving the site going in that direction. Everything else was going down the hill onto Center Street. So it really, I mean, the, the noise was just barely at the criteria. I, I got to say this, but I know it doesn't sound good, but once those vehicles leave that site and are on a public roadway, they're exempt. There is no noise regulation for them. There is no noise regulation for vehicles traveling on public roadways. The only traffic noise regulation would be the Oregon Department of Transportation's. And, and, well, first of all, that's 67 decibels, so you're probably not going to have any impacts from the trucks anyway. But it's really only applicable to highways when you do a traffic noise study, like we did one for Beaver Creek Road when they widened out the intersection. That's when they trigger traffic noise studies. The, the DEQ regulations are applicable only to the, to the vehicles when they're on the site. As soon as they leave that site and they're on public roads, they're exempt from the noise standard. So there really is no noise impact criteria for the trucks traveling on St. John, on John Adams, which I know you probably didn't want to hear that, but that's-
Well, I'm more interested in the trucks that are idling at the, in the, in the lot. That, that's, that's the concern I have, because you, you'll have, at full build-out, you, you potentially have 40 trucks up there, and they could all be idling at the same time. Now, what are the odds of that happening? But you never know. The other thing, I, just to comment, is that I, you know, I live near where B&amp;B's office for garbage collection is, and those trucks drive by and idle. They leave their trucks and they run in and do whatever they do, and they leave those trucks idling. I live three houses away, and I could smell those trucks. I live three houses away and I could smell those trucks, one truck, and I can smell it idling and I'm, I'm only two houses away. So, I guess that, that's, that's a little bit concerned for me is, is having those vehicles that close to homes and whether they'd be-
I certainly want to say this with all due respect to Chair Powell, but that's, if you look at the drawing, we are fortunate to have open space surrounding almost half the site and then we're above another third of the site. And, um, so, this, this is kind of a unique location in terms of dispersing whatever-
Yeah, and I'm less concerned about it. I'm, I'm, as I'm more, I'm not worried about one truck idling, I'm worried about 40 trucks idling at once. That's, I guess, my biggest concern in, in having a, you know, an overcast day in, in picking that up. I, it may never happen as far as I know, but I just want to understand that we've looked at and reviewed it. Uh, let's see, I think that's all I have for the moment. Any other questions? Dan?
Yeah, I have a traffic question. I'm looking at figure two in the, in the report, and I just want to understand this here. I'm looking at the project site, the two, the two locations there, and I just want to understand this chart completely. So, what we're saying on the south side of the site is that, um, there's a total of 210 trips a day that are exiting, I guess exiting or entering, right?
Correct, either.
Currently, and 135 of those are Oregon City Public Works?
Correct.
And it's just 75 that are, that are others.
Others, right.
Okay.
So, majority, there's a lot of vehicles that enter the south from the site, go on-site and then leave from the south, and that's why the 210 is naturally a lot bigger than the 112.
So, then you could actually add those two. You're saying, you could add the 210 daily going through the south side and the 112 going through the north side and there's 300 and, 322 trips a day? Is that right?
Well, some of them are the same trip. Some of them, the 75 are the same trip.
Oh, okay.
Right. Yeah. Well, I guess what are you getting at? Yeah, there's, I mean, there's 200-
There's 210 total, right?
210 total on the southern end, another 112 on the northern end. But some of them are, started at one end and went straight through.
Straight through.
So, you got 135 public works trips on the southern end and 37 on the northern end.
On a daily basis.
On a daily basis. That's what's going on today.
No way. This is no way.
Yeah, so we've counted it multiple days. We had tube counts out for two different days and I had several from my office out there for, for six hours and the counts that she collected and documented matched very closely to the tube counts and then we matched them to turn count. So, we got about four different days of data. Interesting thing out there is we, we talked to people and they were telling us how much traffic goes through there. I remember Kristen who did our counts and she said, "There's all these cars going through there and we weren't counted and we never saw them and we have multiple days. We don't just have one day of counts." So, I feel good about, you know, what we have. And I've been there myself and I've seen it, so I feel confident about what we have.
I lived on this street for the last seven years, so I just, I can't, I just can't believe there's that many. I mean-
Is it too many or not? Are there more out there or what do you think?
Oh, there's a lot less than that.
There's a lot less, okay.
A lot less of the cut-
Are you talking a lot less cut-through traffic or a lot less public works traffic?
Right now, just, just total, total traffic.
Total traffic.
Total traffic in a day.
Because that upper yard-
Two ways, Peter.
It's two ways, so there's only, I mean, that's hardly anything. I mean, 100 cars, you know, it's 100 cars a day.
Yeah, it's not much.
It's, that's a very, very, very small number. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a, it's a small number.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, no questions? Okay, great. I guess that's it for now. Thank you very much. So, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing, or to the folks in the audience that would like to speak. Do you have any?
I have one comment form from Mr. Gifford.
Then we will call Mr. Gifford up.
Mr. Gifford can accompany you.
We'll call Mr. Gifford up and his accompanimentist.
His assistant.
Chair Powell and Commissioner members, I'm William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. I am the Chair of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association in which this project plan is, exists. And I, I wanted, just for the record, to note that we are planning a, because of the courtesy that the city staff and the commission is affording us to postpone this again because of the, of the timing of the, the reports that we have received from, from staff. In order for the neighborhood to review it, we are planning on a meeting tomorrow evening that, that we hope we'll, we'll be able to have some of the neighbors together to, to discuss some of these issues.
And where would that be?
That meeting is going to be at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening in the basement of Atkinson Church on the corner of Sixth and John Adams. We normally meet at the fire station, but because of the, the late notice, well, we weren't able to get our regular meeting space.
Great.
A number of times was mentioned this evening how thorough the answers were to the 50 issues that had been raised, but in my mind, there's still some, some additional information that needs to be clarified. And I didn't know if it's, if it's possible or appropriate for me to ask a couple of questions of the consultants since they're here and they went to all the trouble of being here. Specifically, I had a question about noise.
You, you feel free to ask the question and they will have an opportunity to rebut and they can answer that question during their rebuttal.
Okay. The question that I had is just, there's two issues about noise and, again, this speaks to some of the questions that we had raised that I didn't feel were answered quite as, quite as thoroughly as, as the intent of the question was. Specifically, one question had to do with noise reflection off of the, off of the rock wall. And with increased traffic up there, will, will that reflection increase the amount of noise? And I think that it's common knowledge that the higher elevation a noise is created, the farther that it travels. And I think that, that is, you know, when you're at the top of a hill, you can hear things from miles away that at the bottom of the hill, you wouldn't be able to hear. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if that was taken into effect, that if you just listen to things at the same level that the noise is made of, you might not realize it as being heard blocks and blocks away. So, those, those are two questions that I had about noise, about reflection and of, and of height. And the, the last question I had was, idling was mentioned, um, engine idling I'm talking about. And it was, it was in reference to starting the engines up and letting the engines warm up, but I think there's going to be another issue when, when South John Adams is closed, that there will be gates at both ends of that, that's planned. And while the, while the trucks are waiting for those gates to open, I don't know how long a period of time that is, but there's going to be some, some big engines just sitting there idling for the gates to open and again for them to close. And I don't know how that is either going to be mitigated or is there, are there going to, is it going to be electronic gates? Are the drivers going to have to jump out and open the gates? I'm just curious about how that's going to be, how that's planned to be dealt with. Denise McGriff?
Denise McGriff, Landes' Chair for the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I also live in Oregon City. I don't really have testimony, but I just wanted to make a couple of points that it's been, as, as we're all aware, those of us that have attended the meetings, there are a number of residents who live in the John Adams area that have come, but I want to make a point that the area completely surrounding the public workshop on Center Street, there are people there who will also be impacted and that is zoned residential. And I want to say that the other thing about the site analysis is that it's probably a little bit superficial in the sense that, sure, go tell your GIS people to find all the sites that are four acres. So, we obviously know that public works can't build on parkland and things like that. So, those, I mean, that, I would have just thrown those out, but why even get up and testify about it because it's totally, it's irrelevant. So, we get back to the sites that are possibly, possibly properly zoned. And as I recall, years ago, there was no I-zone for institutional, so the public works department may have been zoned industrial or some other use, but the city has changed zoning to allow full, you know, the full use of this site for the public works department. They changed the MUC zone to now allow things like city halls, which were not previously there. So, that in a way, I don't think is an impediment because if the city decides it wants to go after a piece of property, it has the ability to take it by a voluntary sale or condemnation. So, there are other things that should have been looked at or at least testified about in terms of looking at other sites. So, I think that another option is that while those sites may not have been quote-unquote "big enough," this site is small as well and they're looking at going up. So, if you're someplace else, wouldn't you also think of going up as opposed to sprawling out? So, that was just, that was just something I saw when I was reading the material. I also want to add to what William said about noise reflection. I live in a section of the McLaughlin neighborhood that has got buildings and elevation where the noise does go up and just stay up there. So, there are things that I hear that I sit on my little hill that maybe somebody in another part of the street is not going to hear, but because I'm elevated, I hear a lot more and different types of noises. So, that was something I didn't, I agree with William. I didn't see that in there because that, there will be a lot more noise coming up and floating out. So, just a couple of points. Appreciate the work. We'd also like to get a copy of the PowerPoint. If that could be sent to me tomorrow, I can print off some copies for people who weren't able to be here.
I appreciate a copy of that as well.
So, thank you.
I had one, one last comment, something to build on Ms. McGriff's comments about City Hall is, City Hall was moved into the McLaughlin neighborhood without any process of asking the neighborhood as to what they thought of it or, or what the impact would be for the additional traffic and parking and, and, let me use the word disruption of the neighborhood. And I'd like to make sure that the, that the increased use of public works site be taken into consideration with the increased use of the neighborhood for, for the City Hall as well. And I know that City Hall is not directly related to public use or public works, but the two in conjunction, I think, you know, need to, need to see some, some combined effect.
Major, please be a major mediator. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we're, you know, we're still interested, we are, again, just to reiterate, we've been having a very good dialogue with the, with the staff and they've been very helpful and we're not, you know, when you said rebut, I was hoping we would not be rebutting, we'd be just, if we have any-
Clarifying.
Clarifying.
Sure. Well, that's the word that we get to use here, so.
I know, but it is an adversarial sort of view.
Okay, well, I take that back. We'll clarify instead of rebut tonight.
Rebut, yes, rebut.
Anyone else, Tony?
That's the only ones-
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue, for, against, or either, neither? All right. At this time, we're going to let the applicant come forward and rebut if you would like or to whatever the word you want to use today.
Clear.
Thank you.
I can address a couple of those issues and maybe with Michael's help, we can address some of the others, but idling at the gates was brought up at a couple of the neighborhood meetings and what we talked about was that the, through sign, that we would open the gates during working hours so trucks wouldn't have to stop and idle in order to enter the site. And that the site access for the public would be controlled through signs that would say "no public access." So, it may take a while to sort of train people not to go through the site. Excuse me, but that was the intent and that was a response to the concern from the neighborhood. So, we, we recognize that, 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 that would be an issue because then they would be idling at the perimeter of the site, which is not where you want them. If, if there is any idling, as you brought up, it would be in the center of the site. So, that's one issue.
I'd like to add though, the kind of gates that we have at Mountain View Reservoir, ones that you swipe a card and there's no getting out of your vehicle and monkeying with gates and this and that. So, it's pretty darn quick and then there's none, as you leave the site, you don't stop, you just go. So, because we usually leave the gate open if we're there. So, it's not a lot of hanging around.
As far as noise reflectance off of the bluff, I think, at least as far as noise reflectance from the lower site out to the neighborhood, to the residential neighborhood, I, I think that will actually improve with moving all of the large truck traffic up to the upper site because right now, there's, there's the fleet shop on the lower level, there's storage bins, and so there's a lot of, kind of large, noisier vehicles on the lower site and that reflectance to the, to the northwest, I think, would actually be reduced. We're going to have a landscape parking lot, it's just going to be small, for the most part, small vehicles and public works, uh, engineering and parking for the, for the four-story building. So, as far as that's concerned, now, maybe Michael, you might have some comments about higher elevations that I'm not sure I could address that.
Basically, he, he is correct that that, the ground effects of noise can make a really big difference on how well it transmits. In general, if you have a point source floating in free space, it's, the noise is going to go away in a sphere and it's going to dissipate in the inverse square law and that turns out to be, um, um, six decibels per doubling of distance. So, for each doubling of distance, it's going to get six decibels quieter. If you move that over a reflective plane like over this table, then all of a sudden, you're only going to get three decibels per doubling of distance, so it's not going to reduce anywhere near as fast because half of it's being reflected up. So, if you've got a noise source that's way up in the air, it is going to transmit very well and it's going to transmit around. If you've got something that's close to the ground, how far it transmits depends upon the ground it's transmitting over. If you've got concrete or water, it's going to transmit pretty well. You've got softer things like, 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 you know, field grass or even lawn, some topographical conditions, it can reduce it quite a bit. It's really, um, it's really more applicable to, to far-field noise transmissions than it is to short field. Within a few hundred feet, noise pretty much does the same thing. It's when you're at a great distance from an object that something strange can happen. That's when atmospheric and wind and temperature can all start to have more of an effect on it. So, you might hear something from a great distance away that you normally couldn't hear because the wind's blowing towards you, but if the wind wasn't blowing towards you, you might not hear it at all. So, there are some things we just can't take into account when we're doing our noise studies. And typically, we can only do our analysis accurately within 300 to 500 feet. Past that, you know, there's way too many variables that can have a really huge effect on it. But in the nearer field, like within 100 or 200 feet, usually we're pretty accurate, within a decibel or two. And as far as the reflections go, it, it can increase the noise, but usually it's not much more than barely perceptible amount. What it does do is it sounds different because it's coming from a different location. In other words, instead of hearing the noise coming from over here, I'm now hearing it coming from up there. And so, it's, it's a sensory thing that you notice, but if you measured it, you may not be able to tell much of a difference.
Mm-hmm.
Chair, Chair Powell, I'd like to add something about the noise.
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing I can say that I'd like to point out that the times of day that will be a very, very good neighbor when it comes to noise is at night and on the weekends. That's when people are home. So, I'd like to remind you that these are, we, we start work in the morning at 7:00 and some people, some people are still sleeping then, a lot of people are already up and, up and about anyway. So, and then at night, unless there's emergency conditions, it's going to be, you'll be the quietest neighbor and then certainly the same on the weekends.
And wasn't, did I not hear that, that you'll be reviewing these noises over a period of time of five years?
Right.
And if we find that those are higher certain decibel, then there'll be some sort of mitigation take place?
Right, and you have to look at one side of the upper yard will have storage bins. We're going to, we want to have as much landscaping as we can because we want to be a beautiful site without being all just structures. So, certainly to keep an eye on it and to respond to neighbors' complaints, that's, that's the way we do business, honestly.
And if I can add, I've already worked them a little bit on discussions of how we would go about mitigating the noise if they, what they needed to do, where we could put a sound wall, you know, different orientation of vehicles, blocking, anything to block or shield. There's a lot of different things they can do. There's still quite a few options, so.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Any other issues you want to discuss?
Just briefly in regards to Ms. McGriff's comment about the superficial site investigation. It was not superficial. We did consider sites that, I mean, John did the, what was the simple thing now, which is to get GIS to map all the vacant sites, but when, back in two thousand and three, five-
Five, two thousand and five, yeah.
When we were doing it, we looked at sites that had buildings on them as well, and so we feel like we did do a thorough job.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Well, we have been asked to move this forward to another date. Tony?
So, if I may, real quick, just a reminder that we're requesting the continuance to the June twenty-second hearing, so it's in two weeks. For information to be mailed out in the packet that will be mailed to the commissioners, we need to receive it by 5:00 PM on Friday, June twelfth, two thousand and nine, so the end of this week. If we receive it after that date, we will PDF the information and email it to the commissioners, but we'll have to enter it in the record that night of the hearing. So, as we do receive information, we'll get it to you as quickly as we can, we just won't be able to get it into the packet.
Okay. And is this June twenty-second the best date? That's my question. Is everyone happy with this date?
As far as I'm aware.
No great questions.
Okay. All right, great. Anything else, Tony?
That's all I have on this.
All right, then, I'm open to a, a motion.
I move a motion to continue this public hearing to June twenty-second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois.
Aye.
Chair Paul.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.